Good evening, this is the Selectman's meeting for the 6th of August 2012. First item on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to bring you up to date, we did not have a meeting last Monday night, and this night, Selectman Davanza and Selectman Gross are absent. Our next item is the correction or acceptance of the minutes from the 23rd of July. If either of you wish to delay that for one week, but are we gonna have... I'm absent next week.
Next week, we have four members here.
Four, just me, so.
Need a motion to postpone the minutes, or you wanna?
No. I've read them, if you can remember, for next week, I'm happy with them.
Okay.
Feel comfortable voting on them next week. Selectman Adams, just a brief summary of Mass Road, if you would...
Yeah, very brief, the work's coming along nicely. Most of the milling has been done, I noticed they put down a base course today, so you're starting to see the final, what the final product's gonna look like, it's very nice, things seem to be moving slowly, smoothly. They still have to raise some of the manhole catch basin frames to final elevation, but seems to be going quite nicely. The weather's been cooperative, and that's been a big help.
Thank you. And on the theme of traffic alerts, I have one for East Dunbarton Road. Tomorrow, between 7:00 AM and 5:00 PM, East Dunbarton Road between Pollard Road and Blackbrook Road will be closed both ways, and traffic will be detoured at Pollard and Blackbrook Road. The closed section will be available only to residents as they exit and enter their homes, however, closed for through traffic. East Dunbarton Road. And I had a thank you note from Diane Fisher, who had the unfortunate situation of having a skunk in their backyard that appeared to be either sick or rabid, and was of some concern, and Officer Pennard from our police department responded, and quickly, professionally, and without any sign of annoyance, took care of the situation. Mrs. Fisher was, Diane Fisher, was thankful for that action. Sue, would you start with the Administrator's Report, please?
Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Tuesday, there's a SUE Commission meeting, and Economic Development Council meeting, and CBA meeting, and Wednesday, cable TV meets, yeah. Consensus folder tonight includes the July 30th AP manifest for $196,657.71, and the July 30th payroll withholding manifest for $147,212.91. August 6th AP manifest for $1 million, that's not a typo, $480,659.17, mostly due to a large check to the school.
One point two to the school.
Right. And the August 6th, 12th payroll and withholding manifest is $160,170.10. You have an employee's status report for a new hire, it is a cop firefighter, and you have the forest fire report bill for fire on July 21st and 22nd in the Locust Hill Horizon Drive area. Motion is needed to accept the consensus folder.
Motion to accept the consensus folder?
Second.
Those in favor of the motion for the consensus folder, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's three zero.
Thank you. And tonight, you have correspondence in need of response, you have funding requests from Granite State Children's Alliance, Home Health and Hospice Care, Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and today, the Red Cross request arrived. A Red Cross one, no, I don't think I brought it down, hold on, I did.
I have the...
Yes, four.
Granite State, and I have Big Brothers and Big Sisters.
Yep, the Red Cross one just came in, and they're requesting $500.
If the rest of the board feels it appropriate, I would just ask that these be held, and we'll consider them at budget formulation time. If you'd put these requests in a hold folder, to bring them back to the table, Sue?
I could do that. You also have a request from Steve Hersam, requesting retroactive authorization for improvements he made on Shanty Road, and also to cut down four to five trees which are overhanging the road. That's at Tab 4C2. His letter was in response to a letter I had sent him that had come to our attention, that some improvements were made there without, it's a classics road owned by the town, but not maintained, and it had come to my attention, some work had been done on that. There is a white, small white PVC drainage pipe going underneath the road, I don't know if any of you are familiar with this area, but it appeared that it had been graded and improved upon, so he's asking for retroactive authorization to do that, and also to cut down four or five trees that are overhanging the road. I would assume you'd want him to...
Is the trees also retroactive action?
No.
No, it's future.
He has not done that yet, he was hoping he could do that, he didn't cut down any town trees when he improved the road. Would you like him to flag the trees, so you know which ones he's referencing?
I meant, I meant to drive out there today, and I never had the time to do it, to see what the three trees were, so yes, I'm interested.
Yep.
Yeah. And if he were to let you know the trees have been flagged in some fashion, then we'll be able to reach a decision next Monday.
Okay. And you can take a look at the PVC pipe he ran. I told him that, you know, we have to be cognizant that he cannot redirect water, and I don't know if he redirected any water.
Whereabouts on Shanty Lane, is it?
Um, do you know, what's her name, where she lives?
Liz Montalongo.
You know Jackie?
Yeah, I know where Shanty Lane is.
Yeah, okay, go in right after her house, and if you go down, I think there's like a bridge, I think it's just before the bridge.
Okay.
Yes.
You can see to the left, he has...
Yes, in this diagram, here's the stream.
Yes.
And there's Monalee, so the little triangle of peace is the one in question.
Yes, and he has cleared quite a bit of that lot, there was some equipment in there, and a RV, I think, or something, but, yeah, I'm not sure.
So it's, it's possible, one result would be to remove the pipe if it is truly redirecting flow of water.
Yeah. And maybe you want Carl to take a look at that, I don't know.
Yeah, four inch PVC isn't gonna do much, they have drainage, at all.
It's very small, yeah. Okay. Five trees. I'll let you know when they're flagged.
Action for next week, and please inform him to mark the trees in some fashion, let you know, so...
And I'll send you out an email when they're flagged. You also have letters from Temple Courtyard residents requesting the guard reel be returned to its original location following project completion by the SUE department over there, and you also received one, one today that came in that's not in this packet from Mrs. Vincent. I do not have a conceptual for you this week, Carl could not get to that, and I will have that for you next week, so do you want to postpone this discussion until next week?
I'd like to ask.
Yes, so if the board's willing, we'll postpone the discussion on Temple Court and its rebuilding after a sewer line has been installed in that residential area. Make sure these three, or three or four letters we've received from residents, that they're part of the background information that the Director of Public Works has. So I believe one of them went into some detail on groundwater.
Yes.
Being respectful of which way the water's flowing.
Okay.
Or should flow.
You also have a letter from residents at 11 Worthley Hill Road regarding drainage problems that they have been experiencing over the years. I think they had hoped that the drainage project below them may have addressed their issues, but they haven't. I had sent that off to Public Works Director Carl Querim, and he emailed his summation, and that's also in the packet at 4C4. At this time, that drainage project is in CIP for next year.
A portion of Worthley Hill Road.
Right.
Storm drainage.
Which would address this gentleman's issue, but I don't know, you know, if it's gonna survive the process, the budget process.
Did you respond to that information to the resident?
Not yet, it was addressed to the board, I wanted the board to see that and to see Carl's response before I responded to him, but I would think the essence of the response would be that at this time, CIP acknowledges the importance of this project, and it is in the CIP matrix for next year, but that they should follow the budget process all the way through.
That's perhaps the only encouraging thing we have, that it is a project identified in next year's CIP.
Okay, I'll draft a letter, and you want me to send it out under my name, on your behalf?
Board happy with that?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, assessors' recommendations, you have a report of a temporary cut for Map 4, Lot 52, and Map 11, Lot 14.
If I could have a motion on the assessors' recommendations?
Motion to accept.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three zero, Catherine?
Yes.
Thank you. Finance Director John Bora's memo at Tab 4E recommends approval of the two-year extension offered in our current contract with Melanson Heath for audit years of 2012 and 13.
And this firm has, has done the audit for the town our last fiscal year, or has it been?
Three years, at least.
Three years.
Yeah.
And so the current contract allows us for an extension?
Yes.
How does the board feel about that?
We've had no problems, no issues, I'll grant the extension.
Yeah, second that.
Okay, you have a motion, those in favor of the motion to grant the extension for two years, indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. At Tab 4F, you have a draft of a budget timeline, and some of our department heads are vacations, I'm waiting to hear back from them, if those time slots I put them in are okay, but from what I had understood from Selectman Gross is that we weren't doing a Saturday all-day presentation this year, that it was a budget committee's preference to come in and listen to the budget presentations made by the department heads to the Board of Selectmen, and typically we do those in four nights, and so we would start them on September 10th, and we would be done the presentations by October 1st, and then I allowed three meetings for Selectmen So the budget committee would get the budget on November 5th, no later than that.
November 5th.
They have to have their first public hearing, let's see, by January 15th. So that gives them November, December.
This is a workable plan, and I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, I'll just wait to hear back from the department heads to make sure those times were good for them, I know Diane had to check with her trustees to make sure that date was good for them.
There's briefings on three different dates?
Four dates.
The 24th, 17th, the 10th, and October 1st. And the last one by year.
Meetings will be held here, Sue?
Yes. What we do is, we do a short one-hour business meeting, and then we go right into budgets on those nights.
So, on the 10th, for those viewing, it'll be a presentation by Live Area and then Parks and Rec. 17th of September, the budget presentation by our emergency services, police and fire. On the 24th of September, there'll be budget presentations to this board, sewer budget as well as public works. And finally, on the 1st of October, a budget presentation by our administration department, essentially all the offices here at the Town Hall. Thank you, Sue, for organizing that and working with the department heads to make it happen.
And when we have a full board, we can discuss more in that time period for the deliberative session, what date you would prefer. I think last year, we did it on a Monday night, because the schools been doing Saturdays, I'll check with them too, to see when they're doing theirs. Just an FYI, under the Federal Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, there's a limit starting January 1st, 2013, for the flexible spending accounts of medical expenses of $2,500. Currently, we offer $3,120 to the employees, so that will be adjusted down to be in compliance of federal law.
And this is the limit that the employee can contribute during the course of a year, starting on the 1st of January? Were any of those amounts in union contracts, or just?
No.
It's just...
No, we never put the amount in a personnel plan or union contract, because it's a amount set by the federal government, so whatever it is, it is. The only other item I want to discuss with you is, as you know, we had gone out to bid for a VRV heating and air conditioning system at Town Hall. We have, the budget we had is $50,000, and it was just budgeted as replacement of what we had, but then we were hopeful that the bids would come in close to that if we liked it just one level and go into a more energy-efficient system, but they came in very high, but we are working with a low bidder to take away some of the options, like individual thermostats in every room, and go to a central controller, where at the central controller, you can control the temperature for each room, so you get the same effect, but it's not a thermostat in each room, there's, in the vent, not the vent, but the unit they put inside at the top, there are thermostats that you can control from the central controller, so we're working on that to get the price down. Hope to have more information to you at the next meeting, and it will be over the $50,000, but the energy savings you'll see would make it worthwhile rather than just doing a replacement in kind. So we're, we're waiting for the final numbers and energy-saving numbers that come in from the vendor, and then we'll see how we can work it into our budget.
How far over the $50,000 were they?
The original one? Oh, way over, instead of $50,000 for the building, it was $200,000 to go to that technology.
Eliminate a lot of thermostats.
Yeah. It also, it is a more energy-efficient system, so they said we would save tremendously, as you know, this is electric heat in the building. And by having individual controls, you'll avoid people opening the windows in the middle of winter because they're too hot. But there were other features to it that lent itself to more consideration, so we took away, like I said, the thermostats, heat recovery system, and we're looking at, and Dave's looking at it to see, and he's also gonna look at the replacement in kind, and what would the energy savings just be with new units like the ones we have. The option to go to VRV, he would have two condensers, and I'll have to talk to Bill about it, because he was around when we put in the gas line, I know there's gas line out there, but he would position them at the rear of the building, one on each side, but I don't know if we have that, the distance required under fire code, so we'll be talking though, before that goes much further, which would eliminate the floor and the side, which we built those little shelters over them, because they were always subject to the ice and the snow coming down and hitting them, and high repair bills to them. So more to come on that.
I'm not sure, thank you for the bad news or the good news.
Well, it will be getting better.
It's getting better, thank you. We did, with the Town Administrator's Report, we zoomed right by what would have been public comment at 10 minutes past 6:00, there were no members of the public wishing to speak at that time. Though it's typical, later in the evening, we do have a second opportunity for people who would find it difficult to be here early when we first start our board meeting. Selectman's discussion is the next item on the agenda, old business. I'll bring up just one item, and Sue, it's in the administrative realm, and that, picking up on what you were just discussing about this building here. What has been happening with a redesign of the floor above us?
We have a redesign, the way, where we left it off was the board directed me to get another design of upstairs with Catherine's office and my office as the revenue collection office, make it one big office. And I've also, by the way, when I'm talking heating and air conditioning, I'm making sure the mechanical people are okay with this, and they are, so, and we do have a design, but what it was lacking was a secondary door, and I would really want two doors in a revenue collection office, so we had sent it back to the architect and asked him to factor in a door, either going into the next room, which is now finance, or the other room, but they should be, preferably to the finance area, only because it just gives another outlet for people.
Okay, well, we'll be looking forward to that to come before us then for consideration. Do we have any new business that members want to bring up?
I have nothing at this time.
I would like to bring up, on a new business, we had spoke, when we had the meeting on the new bypass on the highway, we had spoke very briefly about possibly getting the restriction lifted for the trucks on Gulf Town Back Road. With the permission of the board, I would like to know if it'd be okay for the Town Administrator to draft a letter and send it off to Manchester, to Mayor Ted Gatzis, to see if we could come to a happy medium and take any restrictions that have been posted on that Gulf Town Back Road to be lifted, so that we could now have through truck access if that new plan that's in incipient stages of starting, we'd be one step ahead of them.
I'm, I'm in favor of the end result, I'm just concerned about the timing. The I-293 effort you're speaking of is a significant redesign on 293 for exits 6 and 7, and it's in the conceptual stage.
Yep.
Which if it comes out of conceptual stage, then it provides enough information to be placed somewhere further down the 10-year plan, so it's gonna be a considerable while before we see that, but nevertheless, it's, we need not wait 10 years.
Exactly, that's, that's my thoughts, exactly.
For that to trigger a review of why trucks are prohibited from Manchester to enter Gulf Town on Gulf Town Back Road.
Yeah, I think we ought to ask them to reengage in a conversation.
And Sue, if you draft an appropriate letter and bring Kyle into that conversation with you, because he has all the details of who was involved and what their concerns were at the time.
And we have some land on the back road that if they were to allow the trucks to be allowed to go there, we may be able to further expansion, again, looking down the road.
I'm sorry if Selectman Davanza's not here, because he would probably talk for 10 minutes on that subject. So he'll pick up the beat when he sees the letter you drafted. Yes, that's good, please work on that, Sue.
And I have one other.
Yes.
At Jaws Plaza, the new clothing store, Hurlbert's, Herbert's, they're fully loaded, their opening day, I saw the sign, grand, I was gonna make an appearance and introduce myself, grand opening day, maybe Lieutenant Connor can shed some light, but it's, it's coming, grand opening coming soon, so I know the new sign's been placed on the building, the building is loaded with clothing and all kinds of articles, and soon to open up, and hopefully the people of the town will support that new store.
I'm sorry, give the name of the store again, please.
It's Herbert's.
Pronounced Hughbert's.
Hughbert's.
Is there an L in it? No?
H-E-U-B.
H-U-B.
Oh, okay, Hughbert's.
Yeah, they're a clothing store, in that fashion.
Were there anything to report, Budget Committee or CIP?
I have CIP. The CIP met the other night for our final meeting, we are going to now pass the CIP to the Planning Board, which is coming up August 16th at 7:00 PM, it'll be here, it'll go to their, to that next step in the, in the plan. We worked diligently throughout the years, through this past year, trying to keep in mind the tax dollar for the people, and, you know, the budgets and spending, we had significant discussion about postponing things and putting things off, what adverse effect it has by postponing, we put more stuff at the end of the lines, and it just, we spend more down the road where we should be spending it now, and some of the, we'll say apparatus, or some of the equipment suffers in the long run. We, we gave, the CIP committee gave what we felt is a very honest, worked budget for the, for the town to work with, and again, we're hoping we have the support on that as it goes. And the one other thing, after the budget we talked about, if you look on page 5C of your folder, the use of funds, we have some, what were those fees, Sue?
Impact fees?
Impact fees, we have impact fees that are becoming available, the CIP committee feels that they're, they're a recommendation committee, not a spending committee, and they're going to look to give that to the Board of Selectmen, we should be, you know, the committee wants nothing to do with it, they want it to come to us, and they want us to make the recommendations, there is some money that's ready to be doled out to different divisions.
It's, it's always ready to be expended for legitimate purposes.
Correct.
On the other hand, there is a time, there's a sunset.
And some of it's sunsetting next year.
Yes, exactly.
Some of the public safety.
I think, is that the issue you wanted to bring up, that there's a sunset on some of the money, if you don't spend it by a certain limitation?
It goes back to the, yeah.
Which monies are those, do we know?
Public safety.
Public safety.
The two areas highlighted under the call is 16 dot 10 dot 2 and 16 10 dot 3, basically that, that explains the physical period retaining the monies and things like that, they just, they may be coming to this board, we sought legal counsel to have the attorney give us some direction as to if we did right, or, you know, if we need to make some adjustments, but just look for that coming down the road.
A financial question then, Sue, somebody in the finance office does monitor the sunset of these monies, so that...
Actually, it's... Actually, it's planning. Brian Rose.
Brian, the planning department. So in the course of business, he would give us a heads up that a year from now, certain monies would, needs to go towards legitimate project.
Yeah, and I think there's like 50,000 in impact fees for public safety that
Don't want to be caught.
Needs to be used next year.
That something has to happen next week. It'd be appropriate to have a good notice on that. So that's Brian's job.
And that was pretty much it. Like I said, the board worked pretty hard throughout the year to try to, you know, keep the almighty dollar in mind, not to overwhelm for the years down the road with things that need to be, you know, purchased on an emergency purchase to impact things. Board, along with myself, I think we did a pretty good job. It's my first time, a very, you know, interesting learning, learning process. I'll thank the Selectmen peers for putting me there. You know, it's just, there's a lot to learn in a year's time and I enjoyed that, you know, sitting with that committee. And I did learn a lot about how things go in town and, you know.
Thank you for representing the board. And I know it's many meetings during the summer to put the capital improvement plan package together.
And we, during the budget process, during the overview part this year, one whole segment will be dedicated to CIP because that is the big elephant in the room when it comes to budget time.
Correct, yeah.
And I think the board and the Budget Committee and members of the public need to see, you know, the history of what went to, was approved by planning board, what was approved by the voters, and then the future of what's in there for the next six years. Because I know we just deal with one year, but when you keep deferring, deferring, it makes a bubble, the bubble's here.
Most of the, most of the CIP numbers, if you look at the bottom line, anywhere is between 1 million to 1.4, no higher than 1.4. But they're 1.2 one year, 1.1 another year, 1 point, you know, and we tried to balance it all out so there would be no, no major impact on any taxes or anything like that.
The bottom line's more than 1.4.
Well, yeah.
You're probably talking vehicles.
Right, yes, the vehicles and stuff. Yeah, yeah, my bad.
Look at the bottom line, it's much higher than...
Yeah, yeah, it was vehicles, yeah.
The next item is public hearings on two different issues, but the allotted time for those to begin is 7:00 PM. So we can't start those till 7:00.
Correct.
And so we'll move ahead in the agenda to the town administrator's report.
Well, that's dependent upon the results of our number six. That's why it's there.
Oh, okay.
You need to accept the money before you can approve an RFQ.
So that would be after, after the public hearing, a motion on the RFQ.
If you want a recess to a non-meeting, Selectman Adams and I can discuss non-meeting issues related to negotiations until our 7 o'clock public hearing.
And at 7:15, we have some people joining us?
Yes, to talk about the organizational structures they have worked in for peg stations.
So we have progressed too rapidly and then like a motion to go into a non-meeting?
There's no motion, there's no minutes, there's no posting. We're just going to recess this one.
So we'll have a recess. Is there a motion for that?
So moved till 7 o'clock.
First?
Second.
Second. Those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We will be in recess till 7:00 PM.
This is the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're continuing from a short recess, the 6th of August again. And the next item on our agenda is a public hearing that's been posted, and I'll read the public hearing announcement. The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing required by RSA 31:95-B today, 6th of August at 7:00 PM, to accept and expend $50,000 from the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant, well, excuse me, the $50,000 of the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant, which is from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, to study and develop regulations related to the Pinnard area of town. And we'll take that one at a time. We have another one coming up afterwards, but we'll discuss one at a time. So it's two minutes past seven, and the public hearing is open. Sue, would you provide some background?
Yes, with the Board's permission, the town has applied for the New Hampshire Planning Grant, and we were awarded it, and so they will study the Pinnardville area of town. This is to hire a consultant to do that. The in-kind match will be met by the Gostown Industrial Corporation, I think it's a $3,000 match, and the rest is in-kind services for a match, which is staff time to administer it. This is to look at that area of town and come up with any needed regulations to require good planning and future development of Pinnardville area.
And the issue's been before the Board once before, and that was for the submission of the grant.
Correct.
Which the Board approved, and now the grant has been approved, and it's for us to accept and expend. I also point out that this public hearing was advertised on the 25th of July in the Union Leader. The same words that I spoke to open up this public hearing. Are you here to speak on that one item?
I'm only here for the HDC.
Then, then there are no members of the public here wishing to speak on this Community Planning Grant, so the, five minutes past seven, the public hearing is closed. Any Board discussion? No? Then it'd be appropriate to proceed to a motion to accept and expend $50,000 of the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept and expend $50,000 from the Community Action, Community Planning Grant Program administered by the New Hampshire Housing.
Second that motion, sir?
Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The second public hearing this evening. Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing under RSA 31:95-B tonight, the 6th of August, 7:00 PM, to accept and expend $7,830, a certified local government grant, available from the New Hampshire Historic Resources for the purpose of purchasing historical markers. And that public hearing announcement was also advertised the same date, on the 25th of July, in the Union Leader. It's now six minutes past seven, and the public hearing on that grant is now open. Any members of the public wishing to speak on that?
I'm just here as the Chair of the HDC to answer questions if there are any.
While we're waiting for the public, should any show up at the next few moments? Is there any discussion from the Board about this particular grant for the signage?
This is where they're gonna go, right here in this layout right there, or?
Nine locations.
Yep.
Yes, we have a list of nine locations. And I, Elizabeth, I believe these nine locations were in a great, longer list that started last year with seven.
There's about 60 locations total. The plan was to do this incrementally, a few a year. This actually fits exactly what our plan was. We wanted to have a little bit of money from the operating budget as seed money, private donations, and then we were taking that money and using it as matching the funds for a matching grant, and this fits the bill perfectly. The matching share you see here is a little bit from our operating budget, the HDC's operating budget. There's a donation. I donate my time as a write-to-write and research of those signs, and the Lions Club also made a sizable donation. So then we use that as the 40% match to get the 60% match from the Division of Historical Resources. So we have seven signs in town already. We'll add these nine this coming year, and then next year we'll just have to see how everything goes with budgeting and funds and donations, but the plan is to add them incrementally, a few, just a few a year, until we hit the final amount.
And so thank you for the background, and I, Elizabeth, you're the Chair of the Historic District Commission?
Yes.
Yes. Who is the, you were the author of the grant application which we submitted?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, okay, it's nine minutes past seven. No members of the public wishing to provide comment on this grant? The public hearing is closed. Nine minutes past seven. A motion for this grant?
Sure. A motion to accept and expend the $7,830 CLG grant from the New Hampshire Historical Resources for the purpose of purchasing historical markers for its advancement of the HDC's historic marker program.
And do I have a second?
Yes, sir, a second.
Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you've got, got work to do, Elizabeth. Go get contracts.
As a follow-up to that public hearing and the results of that public hearing, staff seeks the Board's approval or request for qualifications for consultant with funds from the New Hampshire Community Planning Grant.
A motion to?
Motion.
To approve a request for qualifications be, is, will the document be brought before the Board or?
It's in your packet at tab seven, Requesting Qualifications.
Just refresh my memory while I look at that. So the qualifications statements being received by a certain date in this document, that was, that date is?
I guess 31st, I believe.
Was written, knowing that it is the 6th we're approving it.
Yes, they want to get this out tomorrow.
Okay. So we have before us the actual request for qualifications, and we would like, I'd like a motion to?
Motion.
Have this released.
Motion to accept requests for qualifications for the planning consultant for the Pinnard- for the Pinnardville Sustainable Community Plan in SMART, however you want to follow it up.
Second that motion?
Those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And finally, staff wants to set up an RFQ selection committee. And they would like a member of the Planning Board and Selectmen. And Derek will be on it, Brian Rose, who's been involved with this grant, and also Tony Mars from the Gulfstown Industrial Corp. But we would like a volunteer from the Board of Selectmen to also be on this.
If he'd be happy to serve. Yeah, if the chairman sees fit.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Our next agenda item is a discussion of Gulfstown TV items. And that's why you're all here, just thank you. Are you expecting anybody else? I know we weren't on the agenda for another five minutes.
Nope.
So we'll go ahead and start then.
Mr. Chairman, could we invite them up to sit with the microphone, sorry?
Come up to the microphone so the audience can hear your comments clearer.
I'm not gonna walk that far. That's why. Obviously not good at it.
If you'd please start and identify yourself and your role on the Gulfstown TV, please.
Actually, I'm the Director of Manchester Public TV in Manchester. And I'm also the Chairman of the Gulfstown Cable Committee.
Thank you, Jason.
Oh, yeah, Jason called me. That would've been nice, huh?
Yes, I know. I was just reminding you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm Doris Ballard. I'm the Executive Director at Concord Community TV.
And I'm Dottie Grover, the former Director at Legendary Access TV and former member of the Board on the NHCCM. And currently their Membership Director.
Thank you, Doris.
And Marketing Director over here.
And Dottie, we're being here for this discussion on the future of our TV activities.
Happy to help.
Jason, lead off the discussion and we'll see where we go.
I think discussions were very positive from what I read from the report. I didn't realize, I'm sorry I missed the meeting. If I would've known, I definitely would've been here, I apologize. But I didn't know you guys were taking it up so quickly. But...
You're referring to?
The position of, that the Board took four to five vote on establishing GTV funds through the contract that you guys discussed, and also hiring a full-time coordinator, which is a very good thing. I think it's gonna make a huge difference. The, I guess the biggest thing now is, I guess the discussion is the organizational structure and which way you guys would prefer to go. My issue is, and I was a part of Manchester Community TV for 12 years. I was a school district employee working there. And then when Manchester Public TV got established, I became a nonprofit, Director of a nonprofit. So I know the pros and cons of both of them. I think from my perspective, and I can't speak for the young ladies here, is that I don't know if you guys are worried about liability in the process of community access. If you guys are worried about liability when it comes to public access shows, education, government, no, not so much education and government. But of that, in Manchester, that was one of the problems that they were worried about because we have 40 public access shows a week. We have 20 that are live and numerous ones that are dropped off, and we have others that are taped. A lot of things are said, and sometimes, you know, litigation does happen, occurs. One of the reasons why they became a nonprofit was due to the fact that they didn't, the city didn't want to have to worry about being sued. If it's a nonprofit separate...
For the community broadcasting portion of our cable access. In Manchester, the city contracts with a nonprofit to totally operate the programming.
Yep, education, PEG, Public Education and Government, yep. And the reason why, one of the reasons why they did is because of that, so...
So liability associated with the content of programs?
Correct. Yep. And if the Board feels that that's not going to be an issue, then I don't see why making it a nonprofit would be a positive way because you have more control in what goes on because you have a committee, your GTV committee. And then you also have the Selectmen, that can be another one. Then you have the Town Administrator. But if you're worried about that, having a nonprofit separate board alleviates all that problem. You can just have, you know, you guys would appoint the first board and then you would establish whatever way you guys would want to do to have that, you know, two years in, somebody else gets elected, whatever process. But those people are accountable. They would have their own separate board insurance. They would have their own separate liability insurance. They'd have their own separate, you know, equipment insurance. So it wouldn't be part of the town's, you know, money. It would just be from that dedicated 2%. So that's one aspect.
Jason went from a school department to a nonprofit where there are additional costs incurred as a nonprofit.
Yes, we had to take over payroll costs, which comes out for us to be about $2,400 a year.
I mean, so who's that?
Manchester, we became a, Manchester Public TV. I can only speak for myself, but Manchester Public TV, we took on about $2,400 a year we had to pay. And then we, of course, had to pay for our own health insurance, but, which was pretty much being paid by the city, you know, the way it works. You know, they give us money, we then turn around and just pay the health insurance. So that didn't really change.
So your insurance is through the city?
No, our health insurance, it's a waiver process that kind of gets... We're not technically city employees.
Right.
But it gets, we just more or less pay the same rate. The city pays no portion whatsoever. We pay the entire portion out of our budget. So that's how it works on a waiver plan.
But do you get their medical insurance rates?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yep. So that happened, and then we have to pay insurance, which is about $6,500 a year. That's for board insurance, liability insurance, and property insurance, vehicle insurance because we have a van, that was another part of it. So it's about $6,500 a year. But that's also for on a larger scale. It might be smaller in Gulfstown because it's on a smaller scale.
Rent?
Rent, we do $49,000 a year, we pay. So it's, but you could also make, when you do do a contract with a nonprofit, they could stay in the school and they just have their own separate agreement with the school district, meaning that they would have to provide certain things to the school district to be able to keep that space. There's ways to work around that. So I really, I really don't think the cost is the huge, huge issue. And my feeling of going nonprofit to staying, staying, I think it's more about how you guys feel about the situation.
But we're looking at what are the pros and cons of each different structure. So you think a pro for being a, handing it over to a nonprofit is that you get out of the liability for content to show.
Correct, nothing.
But the con I heard was that you give up total control.
You do. You, even if you assign, let's just for say example, you assign five individuals to this Board. You can't tell those five individuals what to do. You know, they are going to do what they want. And if they direct it in a certain way, then...
Board, in this case, being a Board of Directors with a corporation of the nonprofit.
Yeah, you can't walk in there and say, you know what, you need to do it this way because you don't have any right to do that, so, because you, you know, it's autonomy.
As opposed to our current situation where this Board appoints a cable committee?
Yep.
Who, that committee then has a document which is your, provides oversight for the operations of the...
Not really. We are more of an oversight of recommendations. Sue actually has control of the employees themselves. So if there's something that she feels wrong, she actually can control what goes on with that. You wouldn't even have control of the employees.
Right, they would be, currently they're employees of the town. Jason's right.
I'm just trying to draw her out.
Oh, you're right, they do manage.
A comparison of all these facets.
Yeah, it's really, it's a tough comparison. GTV, the GTV committee is just, we make recommendations, we oversee the budget as it goes through. But if you guys turned around and said, freeze, GTV's done, you can't spend any more money, you have that control. You wouldn't have that control when it's a nonprofit. So you do lose a little bit of aspect there. But personally, gone, be in both ways, and I can, Doris is also a nonprofit, she wants to speak to it. But I kind of, the liability situation and, as long as you put some sort of checks and balances in there, where even if it's not immediate, but it's maybe the next year, you can review the committee that you're already there and be able to say, okay, you know what, if you got a three to five, three Selectmen wanted to remove a person, you might be able to do that. Like if you got a vote of three Selectmen, a majority vote, you could, you know, remove one of those Board members if you thought they were just not working. Or the committee itself could remove, you know. There's different ways to do it, and that can be explored, but... George, please, I'm speaking to you.
It was your turn.
Dottie, add to this conversation from what...
I'm Dottie. That's Dottie, close.
I'm sorry, Doris. Add to this conversation from your experience at Concord, please.
Well, I've been the Executive Director for almost two years in October. But I started in 2001 as the Outreach and Development Director. So, and the organization was set up as a nonprofit in 1998. And I believe our first programming was in 99, 2000. So, and the reason for setting it up as a nonprofit is because the city felt that they wanted to have an arm's length away from, you know, liability. And they didn't want to receive complaints if there were any issues with the programming. They just refer it to the nonprofit. And so we have a three-year contract with the city and the school district. We get free space, free room and board, so to speak, in the Concord High School in exchange for giving, you know, access to the students at any time and the teachers with an opportunity to learn in TV and video production, which we do. And so, and we're, we have guidelines we have to follow by, from the city and the school district. We have to have our records, our financials audited every year. And, but we are completely independent as a nonprofit organization, but always cognizant that our funding comes from the franchisees, from the city. And we work very well in collaboration with our partnerships, in our partnerships with both the city and the school district. So it seems to work very well for us. We have three full-time employees of programming and IT Director. And we have myself and a training coordinator. So we offer video camp, youth video camps. And we're very careful, however, not to place any of our youth in programs, helping on programs other than our own. Because we, when an independent contractor, an independent producer does come in to do a show, we used to give a list of names of, that included some students who wanted experience. And we don't do that any longer. We're very careful about placing any of our, any youth under 18, 18 or under, on shows that are with anyone else but our own produced programs. So that is one of the major changes that has happened with us in the past year. And that was as a result of a new insurance carrier because they suggested, and rightfully so, that we, something we'd never thought about, you know? So we have to be very cautious about that. So, but I think that the, in Concord at least, it works very well. And you'd have to ask the city manager and the mayor, of course, maybe. I'm hoping they'd say the same thing. And we have two appointees from the school district and two appointees from the city on our Board.
They were three-year terms?
Two-year terms, max six years. But they can, the appointees can really stop at any time, but it's understood that they're going to serve as a Board, a Board member. It is up to them whether they want to be a voting member or a non-voting member. We had the librarian on our Board for many times, many years. And she was there for six years, and she chose to be a non-voting member. But we have had city councilors on our Board who have been voting members. Our Principal of Concord High is on our Board right now. And the Human Resource Director for the school district is on our Board, which is really great. So we do have, in that sense, a lot of oversight. They know pretty much everything. They, being our partners, know what's going on. And we know how to help them more get programming on the channel. So with them being on our, on the Board.
How many members on your Board of Directors?
We have 11 members now. And that includes two school district members and one appointee from the city. We're still hoping to get another appointee. We have one of the city councilors who's on our Board who's had to resign for personal reasons. So we're waiting for a new appointment.
Jason, your Board of Directors is...
Five.
Five.
Jason, we're having this discussion because of the community programming channel.
Yep.
What's the relationship of the government programming channel in this structure? There's no, there would be no impact, no change, business as usual? Explain how all that works. I just want to bring up, does the nonprofit provide the staff, the technician?
Yep, the nonprofit, as long as you've established in whatever agreement that the PEG services are done by the entity, then all three would be done. You would continue to have the meetings taped. You would consider, continue to have everything that you normally would have. And hopefully with a full-time person, you would have more. And that's the vision of the GTV Board when we brought it up.
So in this case, the nonprofit corporation handles both the government channel and the community programming channel?
In Manchester in 2005, education and government was one entity, which was Manchester Community TV, stayed with the school district. And public access moved to its own nonprofit, to a different, totally different location. And then in 2010, it was put back together and all three were, became a nonprofit. So I, just in the formula, nonprofit formula seems to be, you know, the, when it came for Manchester anyways, seemed to be the right way to go for what they wanted to do. Because of, you know, it all came down to liability issues, arm length. I think Doris said it perfectly when it came to that situation. But some towns are, you know, small enough where they really don't have to worry about that. You know, Concord and Manchester, we have to worry about that sometimes, so...
What is the budget for each of your nonprofits?
Mine is $453,000.
$453,000?
Ours is $250,000. And we received about $241,000 from the, well, 32% of what was received last year that was based on 32% of that. So we're going to get about $240,000 from franchisees.
So of your $250,000 budget, $240,000 comes from franchisees?
Right, we have to raise about $10,000 just to meet our budget if we want to be able to have a marketing budget and, you know, small money for... Otherwise, we would just be bare bones because we don't want to lay anyone off. We have a great team. We get a lot done for all the three channels and we're just humming along. So we want to keep all our employees. So we try to raise that additional $10,000.
You have how many full-time employees?
Three full-time, three part-time.
Three full-time, three part-time. I know you have more than that, three.
Jason, this is for all three channels and your programming over.
How much, how much your budget comes from the franchise fee?
Well, percentage-wise, all of it comes, $453,000 comes from, well, I can't say it comes from the franchise fee because it comes directly from the general fund of the city, pays it. So the franchise fees comes into the city, then a portion gets, they do whatever they want with it. And then they just give us that amount. They get about 1.5 million in Manchester, so it's about...
What portion of the, what portion of the day are you programming on those channels? Is it 24 hours a day or is it? It is. And Jason, currently, what are you operating here in Gulfstown?
Oh, boy.
I know you, I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, you are, because I couldn't tell you exact amounts.
Rough ballpark, is it 50% for, 30% one quarter?
I think, Dick happens to be in the audience, he might be able to give a little bit better number on it than I would be able to. But I don't know if you wanted to ask him. I couldn't give you an exact percentage, I couldn't. I don't, I know what happens at the station just by discussing with people, but I couldn't tell you the percentage.
I'm just going down that rabbit trail. You know, the more programming you have per 24 hours, the more staff you need.
Well, it's, we have, we do original programming. So program that is produced...
We'll come back to that.
That is produced in Manchester, like in Manchester citizens. We go out and tape staff and everything. We do 2,450 events a year. So in, we could produce, and this is, I love to say this, we actually could sit and play something new on every channel. I mean, excuse me, on one channel. If we took one channel and said, okay, Channel 16, we could play, it's something like, I think we figured out three, almost three and a half months of never repeating that program all the way straight through on one channel, we produced that much programming. So $453,000, that's what that does. I'd assume in Gulfstown that for $111,000, we're going to be producing, I, in the report that I gave to you guys, assume that it's going to double of what we're doing right now. That's what I envisioned that it would be because the money's almost doubling. And I think percentage-wise, money does equal programs, that's how it works. You know, you can't, you're not going to expect somebody to give them $200,000 and expect them to give $500,000 worth of programming. It's not going to happen. You need the staff members to be there, the hours to be there. So I think Gulfstown, I prefer not to say now, I prefer to say what the future's going to be.
Jason, how many full-time and part-time do you have?
I have three full-time right now, one person just left, and then I'm going to, in the process of, we have one part-time, but we're going to be four total part-time by the time October rolls around, is my, my envision plan right now, so.
Your vision plan is three full-time, four part-time?
That's what I'm envisioning, so, but, yeah, we, we have costs that Doris doesn't have. Like we used, and we didn't used to have, we have electricity, cable, you know, rent. Yeah, that, so that's where if you look at the differential, you look, you look at the differential and say, oh, four hundred and fifty-three compared to that. Well, about eighty-five thousand of that, four hundred and fifty-three is utilities that I didn't have to, have to pay for before, so.
For us, it's an in-kind donation on the books for forty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. This is what they estimated would cost for rent and utilities if we were to pay that. So, I mean, you add that to it, we're very fortunate, we don't have to pay anything because we'd have to clearly have layoffs.
And, and another aspect, and I know, I know Dottie can speak here, but the, the, another aspect of the nonprofit is that you don't, you don't fall under a lot of the things where payroll is considered. You know, you don't have to worry about retirement, you don't have to worry about, like, it, it, it's just, that's, you have more flexibility. When you got part of the, the town, you, you hire a full-time person, this full-time person's getting this, 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 and this, and this, and that's the way it's happening. When you're a nonprofit, you have a little bit more flexibility. If you only have thirty thousand dollars extra, you only want to pay the person twenty-five thousand dollars because you have to pay the other five thousand for taxes, that's what you do. But, you know, that's, you have to give and take, so.
So in essence, you get more for your money.
Kind of sometimes what I feel, so.
Dottie, I, I, you.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that.
I want to bring you in here. Please, please explain what you, your, what your organization does and, and how that fits into the scope of our town's operation.
Now I'm talking about the one I used to have because I've retired, but I still remember, it was only a month ago. So I do know what happened. We've been a government, a department of the government since the very beginning. And by that, I mean back in nineteen eighty-four when the, the studio first opened. And it has grown and evolved throughout the years from a couple of hours of programming a week and one person who ran in from the cable company up to where it is now. And where it is now is we have, instead of a seven hundred and fifty square foot room in a high school where they paid everything in, in exchange for us giving them certain amenities. To now, we have our own building that the taxpayers chose to build and pay for in one year. And, but of that building, everything that comes out of the budget pays for whatever is needed. Whether it's repairs, or water, or lights, or heat, or whatever, everything is within that budget. And this year, fiscal year thirteen, the budget is two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That's for two full-time people. We also have a half-time person, but we don't pay for her. She's paid for through the ABLE program, and I know that you've had an ABLE employee at the Gulfstown station for a long time. That's one of the nicest things the government has done for us, is provide that program. It's been a very good relationship, and it saves us a lot of money and helps us out a lot. As far as the expenses are concerned, you already know them. You know how to run a department, you have departments, cable is a department in Londonary. So the same kinds of things that you would have in any other department would occur in that one as well. We have no need to hire an HR person or have their services, there's somebody in the town that does that. Finance takes care of payroll, they take care of paying the bills and all of that sort of thing. So those kinds of things are just sort of folded into the regular expenses, and I don't think they're significant enough that anybody would notice if they were gone or if they were there. I think that's, you know, with two, two people, basically, I think it's very minute. So the, the financial structure has been in the past that, we started out at two percent of the five, way back when. That changed to the full five percent back in, I believe it was two thousand. And we had that money set aside, the town manager set, set up a special revenue fund in two thousand and two to isolate that money so that it wouldn't be used for anything else, or end up in the general fund and used in that way. The advantage of that was that with that money set aside, we never budgeted the whole amount of money in any given year. We weren't like, oh, boy, we got money, let's spend it. We had that incentive of, if we don't spend it, it's going to be in that account for when we really need it. So things like eighty thousand dollars in the head end, we were able to do that by saving up for a couple of years. We were able to do a very expensive control room and, and lighting grids and things like that by saving up a little bit in that special revenue fund. Unfortunately, we found out that it didn't get established properly back in two thousand and two, so it went away this year. But there's a very large contingency of people in town that feel that it should be returned, and that the money that comes in for cable should specifically go to public, uh, public education and government access. Now, as far as the three divisions, the P, the E, and the G, the way it has always been is that we felt that if the educational part of the community was going to be held accountable for what's going to be on their channel, they should have all the decision-making as to what was going to be on there and when it would play. They have always been offered assistance from the town for whatever they want, we give them whatever kind of assistance they need. But basically, they have normally tried to have a person of their own at, in the beginning, very part-time, and recently that went to a full-time position. So that person goes out and, you know, arranges for shoots and things within the schools, and also comes in and programs the channels. As far as purchasing equipment for playback and that sort of thing, we take care of all of that within our budget. So they don't have to do anything, everything is provided for them, they just have to bring in the programming. We would even program for them, but they prefer to do that themselves, so that's, that's fine. So there's kind of another person working there, but it doesn't come out of our budget at all, it comes out of the school district budget. We have, over the years, given them a grant every year, normally about seventy-five hundred dollars, figuring, you know, we want to start getting camcorders and things like that into the hands of the kids in the classrooms. And that has been sufficient for them most years, they have not come and asked for anything further except support, which we gladly give. As far as the government channel is concerned, we provide coverage of all live meetings as long as we're given fair warning, okay? I had to, a long time ago, kind of put my foot down and say, you know, twenty-four hours' notice is really not enough, so.
Municipal, as large as London area, I imagine, has lots of committee sessions.
Well, we do, and I wish I could tell you that every single one of them wanted to be on TV, because we certainly do try. But some of them seem to duck and dodge a lot.
Some are very happy not to be on TV.
Yes, yes, they are. But we currently cover every town council meeting, every budget committee meeting, all of the planning board and zoning board. And we've been covering conservation and all of the extra committees, that the planning board has a lot of extra committees. We've been covering all of those as well, and we cover some of the smaller things like the old home day committee, things like that. So we're covering everything that's been asked, and we're constantly out there kind of, you know, pushing a little bit going, sure, wouldn't you like to be on TV? And we keep getting more people to think about it, and more people that as they get elected, they come on with the idea of, I think this ought to be on TV. So the, the things are changing in that way. The thing with the government is that it's gavel-to-gavel coverage. We do not allow anybody to editorialize during the meeting or with the cameras, there, we have, we don't have employees necessarily, this is a gray area here.
Explain what you mean by editorializing with a camera.
Well, I, I, when I used to train the people to run the camcorders, and that's how they were covering meetings, I would explain to them that they were not to go in there, and every time you said something, and you seemed particularly intelligent and alert, that they would get a nice close-up on you. But if you were dozing off and looking like you were totally lost, now they're getting a close-up on you. And no, 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 you, you be fair to everybody.
I, I thought that once you made, I want to make sure.
That's what I mean, okay? You can be, do some very subtle things with no words. So they were trained that they couldn't do that, and because it's the government, we could tell them, this is how you're going to cover it, even if they were coming in as a volunteer. We eventually went to the point where we're covering so many meetings that I said, it's not reasonable to expect that we're going to get volunteers to cover these every single time. So we started hiring people that would come in just to do the meetings, they were not regular employees. And we paid them, and you think you do the same thing here, don't you? Sometimes you pay, no, not here.
Per, per hour.
Per hour, okay, we don't pay per hour, we pay per meeting, okay? So it's thirty-five dollars, and it's the length of the meeting, thirty-five dollars for a three-hour meeting, fifty dollars for anything over three hours. And we haven't given them a raise in a while either, so I'm feeling a little guilty about that. But, so those are people who come in from the outside, and with all the meetings we do, we have not exceeded a five thousand dollar budget in a year. And then we also give out stipends to a couple of young people that come in and help with the media camps and, and the media club and things like that as well. Just thinking that there are some things that you want to pay someone so that you can hold them accountable for what they're doing. And I've never felt that you can come down too hard on a volunteer when they come in and do it for nothing. So with the government channel, the only other things that happened besides that gavel-to-gavel would be, we have, the person who's now the director would do documentaries. So for example, going around from each department in the town and explaining, well, I use this as an example when I was doing orientations. For example, what does an assessor do all day? I happen to be very good friends with our assessor, I don't have a clue what that woman does all day. And you know what, she doesn't know what I do either. So let's go to her department, let's find out what she does for a day. Once the people know what she's doing, well, now they're going to say, well, no wonder we have an assessor. And she's not the woman that's taking the money out of our pockets and putting it into hers. So it helped in that way to get the community to understand their government. And then he would also be responsible for things like the, as we're coming up to an annual meeting, is there something on that warrant that needs explanation? And to do something like that. But the main thing about the government was always no opinions, okay? Just the facts, present the facts, let people make up their own minds. With the educational, like I told you, we just gave that right over to the school district, they made their own policies, rules, whatever. The public part is the fun part, okay? That's always been my favorite, that's the free speech. And with the public part, you're sort of, you're laying it out there and you're trusting people, and you're saying, trusting them to be responsible. And you're saying to them, it's public access television, it's free speech. You can make a program about absolutely anything, anything that you want to make a program about. Now, the scary part of doing an orientation is when you have a sixteen-year-old sitting across from you, and you're saying that to him. Because we've always treated our kids with exactly the same rights as our adults, except that they can't sign out equipment because they can't sign a contract for responsibility. So when you see the sixteen-year-old's eyes kind of light up when you say you can do anything you want, your heart goes, oh, no. But we have had wonderful programs come out of those kids, even, well, one of them, his eyes lit up and he was a challenge. But his mother got him under control, so that wasn't too much of a problem after a while. But the thing is, public access is the same for everybody in our studio, whether you're this high or this old, it doesn't matter. You get the same, the same rights. And we have a lot of students who come in, and they come in after the school day is over. So they're not coming through the door as a student, they're coming through the door as a member of the community, and we treat them as such. And I, we've found that by treating them with respect, they treat us with respect, they treat the equipment with respect. We've had very little problems with breakage and vandalism, I've never had vandalism that I can think of. So that's worked out very well for us. Now, as far as the structure and, and how you can, how you can manage this, okay, for your protection for everybody else's benefit. I know that there's been a feeling for a long time that as a five oh one C three, it gives you an arm's length if anything goes wrong. And you can say, well, we contracted with this five oh one three C, it's not our fault, it's their fault. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to play one now, but it's always been my understanding in the state of New Hampshire, and you gentlemen probably know better than I do, that as selectman or town councilman or whatever, that you have every right to, oh, how would I put it? You have every right to delegate your authority to others. You get delegated authority from, from the board. But you do not have the right to relinquish your responsibility. And I think that's a key factor. The truth is, I don't believe it's ever been tested in the state, because I don't think anything's ever happened that I'm aware of with a five oh one C three, and then to see whether or not it was going to go further than that. I'm not aware of it, you may be.
Well, yeah, the, the only reason why I say that might be the case, but because you have a actual insurance policy, the insurance policy deems the five oh one C three as the, the owner or the liability owner of the content. So even if somebody turned around, anybody could sue anybody for anything.
Oh, absolutely, and we know that, we know that? And I'm not arguing with your insurance company because what they say is absolutely true. I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about, I think it's something you need to check with your state RSAs because they're not necessarily the same thing.
I'm not, I'm not saying it.
So that's all.
In a city as opposed to a town.
You never know, you never know.
What I'm just, I totally understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I can tell you this right now, because I know I've already been through one, that it actually falls under that the town, the town, or the town or the city, the city gets dismissed, just like that, because of the fact that they, it's deemed by the insurance company, and the insurance company covers all the costs.
That's great.
It all comes down to costs. It has nothing to do with who gets sued, seriously, who cares who gets sued, it's who's paying for the defendant.
Well, some people might care.
Have you, have you had litigation?
Yes, I had, I had twice when I was part of the, the town, uh, excuse me, the city, twice.
Out of the city?
Yes.
Not, not as the five oh one C three?
The five oh one C differently.
I'm confused.
It was an employee situation than that.
It wasn't on content?
That, that has nothing, but no, but, but even though, because that came up, there were other discussions about that to make sure.
And I'm, yeah, and I'm not raising that issue to, to, to argue the position
No, no, no.
Because I, I totally understand what you're saying about the insurance company. It's just something that whenever anybody asks me that, I caution them to do their own research and find out. Because state RSAs are pretty specific about what you can and cannot do, and how they're interpreted can be different from lawyer to lawyer. But you need to be comfortable with what they say, and I think that's the key thing. Okay, now I got stuck on that one, was my train of thought, yes.
Dottie, in all your years.
Yeah.
Were you ever sued?
My, many, many years, twenty-four.
Twenty-four years, were you ever sued?
No.
On public content?
No, never, never. I think part of that actually is not because we're a department of the government or not because of five oh one C three. I think, and I think that you guys would agree with this, a lot of it is establishing a relationship with the people that are coming in to work in your, in the facility. Well, that's one thing, I try to always say to them, we are the keepers of the facility, we are the keepers of the equipment, it all belongs to you, okay? So you come in, you take care of it, you own it, so don't mistreat it. And I think establishing those relationships is probably the key thing to making it work.
See, I, I, I agree with you in, in a sense, but the, the problem is that you get, and I've always used this example, you get the one person, the one person that's, yeah. And, and Dottie, luckily, thank God for you, you never, you never had that one person that pushed the envelope too far, that went over the edge, and you know it. You sit down, we all know slander, we all know, we, we learn, we take courses on this stuff. We, I took, I took two courses just on liability and slander and defamation of character, and freedom of speech also. I know what, I'm not a lawyer, but I can tell you, I try to play one sometimes, because it's, it's, it, there's a fine line between what you can and cannot, who a public official is, who a public official is not, who, you know, and you get that one person that will challenge, and one person that will push the envelope, and has a freedom of speech, I respect the freedom of speech as much as any single person in, in access. I find it to be the reason why it was started and the reason why it should still continue forever, is because people with large conglomerates out there controlling everything, the individual should have the right to sit down and talk about their feelings and be able to express, express it to the masses. That's what it's there for. But the problem is that you run into is that you'll have that one person that will abuse it, and doesn't give, doesn't care about everybody else's rights. They care about their own rights, and they will cause a problem, because you will get that individual who will call you up and say, I can't believe you let that go on. We can't stop them from doing that, and they will sue you because they put it on there.
We would be sued by the ACLU.
They will, they will sue you, they will sue the person, they will sue the city, they will, they will sue every single.
I think it's, they'll sue you in one hundred John Does.
Exactly.
To cover their, cover their bus.
That's what it is, but it is.
And the thing is, I, I understand that, okay, and it's not like we've never had any problems whatsoever, we've just been able to kind of nip them in the bud really quickly and get them resolved. And, and I'm not, you know, not here to argue the, the legal points of all of that. What I would say to you is that it has been fairly well-established over the many years of access, and that if you have in place policies, good, strong policies that are applied equally all the time, okay? Evenly all the time. So you don't apply them one way for my best friend and somewhere, some, a different way for somebody I don't like having around here. And if you have that in place, you're in good shape. And I think that's true, no matter what kind of a structure you have, you've got to have that. With the government part of that, that becomes part of your documents for your town, becomes part of your municipal code, that that's the policy. What that also can establish is, once you've got those policies in there, is it can tell you, because I know Jason had, had raised a point earlier, about interference. Interference is an issue. Interference is an issue. You're always gonna have like that one person that's gonna sue. Somewhere along the line, you're gonna have one town counselor, one selectman who's gonna try to interfere with what's going on on a regular basis when they should not be in there at all. And you establish that. You adopt those policies. Those policies establish quite clearly that it's not your role as an individual or as a board to go in there and dictate what's gonna happen on public access, because that's what we're talking about right now is the public part. So that's important to have those established. The other part of this that, that gives you some protection is, and nothing's gonna give you 100%, but some protection is a really strong statement of compliance. And that statement of compliance will say, this is what you can do here. This is what you can't do here. The can't's pretty minimal. And you're gonna sign off saying, I accept responsibility for this and I'm indemnifying. Admonifying can also be thrown out the window if somebody wants to sue.
These are the people who wish to do programming.
The, yes. The producer of the program. The producer of the program would have to sign that statement of compliance. And we make every producer sign one. We make sure they know exactly what they're saying when they sign it. And if they sign it for a child, because kids can't sign, it's a legal document, we make sure that the parent understands. We don't send it home with the kid. So that's another way of protecting yourself. These are just some things that you can do if you decided to go the government route versus the 501(c)(3) route. And that's, you know, that will be your choice.
I totally agree with Dottie on that because that has saved, you know, many times. If you say, I did this because of the rules that they sign, it's, it actually does help a lot.
Well, we actually beat, um, oh goodness, what was his name? I knew I'd forget a name. Ran for governor, I mean for governor, for president, a long time ago, governor of California before Brown. Yes, we had a, we had quite a discussion with his staff, uh, who were insistent upon coming and getting raw footage. A volunteer had come in, borrowed a camera, went out, videotaped, and decided that it wasn't worth their effort to come back and put it on the air. And, uh, two of his lawyers called me, that they were gonna come and they were gonna get that raw footage. And I said, I'm sorry, it's in our policies very clearly. We do not release raw footage. You come in here, you create a program, the program goes on the air. And they went away. So we've had quite a few battles here that we've won. The, uh, the other, the other thing that I just wanted to, to, um, make sure that you weren't, you, uh, knew was part of your options is whatever, whatever you want to do is what you can do. It's one of the scary things, okay, but you can do whatever you want to do. You decide. I don't think there are two towns in New Hampshire that are gonna sit down, and we're just talking New Hampshire. Two towns in New Hampshire that are gonna sit down and say, this is the way I do things. Oh, yeah, I do them the same way. Everybody is a little bit different. You know your community. You need to put something together that's going to address your community's needs. And I think that you're all more than capable of doing that. And the fact that you're asking for suggestions and help and input, I think is very, very admirable. But in the end, you're the ones who know your community and what they want. I would hope that it wouldn't come down to like a money issue, because I don't think it should. Uh, I think that the money is there. You have the franchise fees, even though it's not written in a law anywhere. You can certainly find, as I borrow a phrase from my daughter, the lawyer, a preponderance of evidence that you should be able to use that money to support PEG access television. And I would hope that that's what you would do and that you would try and address this by putting something together that will suit your community and give them, the government, that's all yours. You can do whatever you want with it. The education, you could do it or give it to the school, which I think would be wise. Or, but then we get to the public, it's not you or you or you. It's the public. It's your people. It's your taxpayers and your residents. And they're the ones that deserve to have that access to public access. So.
In listening to everyone, to the discussions, it does bring to mind over the 10 years, almost 11 years I've been at Concord Community TV, a few incidences where we always have a few quirky producers who come in and it's a reflection of the community. Ninety-nine percent of everything we do is very, you know, conquered, very, um, homespun, nonprofit organizations, a good, warm, fuzzy type programming, fun, musical arts, all that. But once in a while, we do get some characters who push the envelope. And I can think of at least three incidences in 11 years where it didn't involve in any lawsuits. However, if I'd been, um, not a nonprofit, had been city-run, it would have made them nervous, very nervous on the public access side. Uh, one, uh, two, um, individuals had a show that they put, they thought they were shock jocks. They were gonna do something very, very, you know, push the envelope within the rights, within their contract that they signed with us there. You know, uh, they weren't breaking any laws, but I got a, a call and we don't look at, we don't censor the, the programs.
We don't either.
We don't not censor the programs. We just play them. We fill out the paperwork, take responsibility for the content, put it on the air. But if somebody watches it and complains, then we take it very seriously. We look at it and we address it. Now, I'm wondering what would have happened? What happened was that, yes, I was a little bit shocked and I sat and met with them and, uh, bottom line was, I couldn't stop them from doing their program, didn't want to do that. But by the end of the conversation, I think they kind of felt that maybe we won't do our show anymore, you know? But I mean, it wasn't anything I had said, except that it's kind of, you know.
We, we have the same, the same policy, that if, that we don't look at it before it goes on the air. They sign the statement of compliance, it's out of our hands. If somebody calls and complains, we do address it then. We pull it, we look at it. Um, and as I would tell people, we'll apply what we know of the law.
Right.
There isn't much law out there in reference to this. And what we know of, of, um, the policies, which I wrote, so I knew them. Then I'd end up calling them back and nine times out of 10, actually, I think there are more than 10 incidences when it happened. But most of the time, I would call them back and I would say, and, and this is where we get into customer relations. So, you know, I really understand why that was upsetting to you. I really do understand that. But the truth of the matter is, we have policies. They didn't break the policies. They have not broken any laws that I am personally familiar with. However, you have other recourse. You can certainly, you know, have a direct conversation or sue against them or whatever you choose to do. But what I would really suggest is that you come here, let me train you how to do public access programming. And then you can counter what they're saying. And so we got a five? We'd do that. We'd do that. So.
Public access, well, community access in general is, the word public access and it's community access. And, uh, it, the, it's, everything's reactive. We're, we can't be proactive in a lot of senses. Ninety-nine percent of the stuff we do is reactive and that's just the way it has to be. But saying exactly what you guys were just talking about, um, and, and I think Dottie actually brought it up about, you know, having a memorandum of understanding when it comes to. You guys are a wonderful board, but three years from now, you know, four years or six years from now, you don't know the board that's gonna be there. By having, when you have it, and I know this just from personal experience, I can speak it. You do have, it might not be an arm's length from liability, but you have an arm's length from control of politicians trying to get their hands on things. So I, and I totally, and you have a great, wonderful relationship with, you know, the Londonderry situations. Sometimes it might not always be that way.
No, no, and it hasn't always been that way.
Yeah, exactly.
It definitely hasn't over the years, but, 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 um, what I would say is that, and correct me if I'm wrong. If you have a municipal code in place, if you have a charter in place or anything like that, you really can't go against those things. No matter how contentious you are on the board, they would have to change it.
Yeah, they could.
In which place now the public gets in, comes in and speaks and then the public gets what they want.
Yeah, we're not a charter.
So, I mean, that's just, no, but I'm saying even with your municipal code, if you're gonna change something, you would still have to make that a public. Yeah, yeah. So it, it's all.
But I think, I think with, if you had, I'm just speaking on the perspective of, of now. It's, it's a lot harder to eliminate the entity now than it would have been, you know, five years ago. Five years ago, you could have gotten 10 aldermen to turn around and say, we're done. That's it. We could have all the hearings in the world, but we're still done. This situation, yes, you could cancel the contract, but because you guys are actually doing it, money through the, through the negotiated contract, you can't even touch that really, because you can't open up the Comcast. And I applaud you for that. That's very few communities that actually do that. And, uh.
You're, you're talking about our decision for the
Yes.
next contract that we want to negotiate a percentage of the, of the fee going straight into, uh.
Doing that is a wonderful way to do it because it, it allows, it allows you guys not to be part of that situ. The only thing, by negotiating, the only, it was something I thought about, by negotiating directly into that, doesn't it actually, by staying a town, part of the town, doesn't that kind of make it tough? Because having that directly funded in.
One area did that one.
You can, you, that money can be set aside. It just was set aside properly in Londonderry.
Oh, you have to dare this. Thank you very much.
And there's two mechanisms, a special revenue fund or, or a more recent one is the cable revolving fund.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And that's what towns are doing now.
Just task to begin.
But just, but just in the, in the aspect of, of, you know, three or four, five, six years from now, it might not be the same board. And this board might be not like the way it is going.
Okay. We, we've been talking about, uh, the information content of programming and, and your, you know, whether it's an administratively-run TV station or a nonprofit-controlled TV station. Talk about equipment usage, though. Do you, um, that's a limitation of any station. No matter what size or your funding, you only have so many cameras, video recorders, that you can allow producers to use or, or studio time. There's only so many minutes in the day that somebody can sit in a studio and, and film some dialogue. Do either of these structures for running a station influence the amount of equipment you have or the, or who has access to the equipment? It makes no difference that.
No, I wouldn't say it does at all. No.
It does, yeah. We, uh, different stations have different, like.
Different policies to how you might access it.
Dottie does.
How long do they, they keep the equipment?
Yeah, everybody does that. But, but as in education, you have the school do the education in, in Londonderry.
Right, school does the education. So we give them the cameras and they take care of that.
You have, uh, your budget has allowed you to allocate so much equipment just for the school access.
Every year, we give them a grant, okay? But we also, we go beyond that and, and we like to be cooperative as much as possible. And if they have something going on and they're like, just, you know, we don't have enough cameras, could we, you know, borrow a couple of yours? Absolutely. No problem. Um, people need to sign up for equipment. They need to be responsible about getting it back on time. All of those kinds of policies are in place as well, um, because the consequences if you don't. Uh, we have, um, what we call a violations and consequences list. And what we talk about is, um, we make a very, very big distinction, very clear distinction between a right and a privilege. And I explain that you have a right to the channel, no matter what, okay? I don't care if you've been so hurried in this, in the facility to the equipment and everything else that we're not gonna even allow you in here again. Call me, tell me to meet you at the door in 10 minutes. Hand me your video. I'll hand you a statement of compliance and it'll go on the air. Might only play once. Who knows, okay? But it'll go on the air at least that once. That's all you're guaranteed. The privilege is through your, um, your, your behavior basically, okay? That if you treat the equipment well, you continue to be able to use the equipment. If you take it out and you tell me that you're gonna go cover, you know, you have to tell me what you're gonna go cover. But if you imply that you're gonna go cover the state fair and you come back and the camera's in a million pieces because you had a last chance, a last minute chance to go bungee jumping and you dropped the camera off the end of the bungee cord, you know? That's not responsible and you've just lost a privilege. So that's the distinction.
The one thing that I, it dawns on me as we're talking about equipment is, uh, as a nonprofit, we're able to raise money for specific purchases. And we have done that. We raised money for cameras, equipment to be loaned out to the schools. We raised money for, um, our, our server when we didn't, before we got the wonderful grant from Comcast of $350,000 about seven years ago for capital improvements.
Was that a pass through to your, was that a pass through to your subscribers?
Yes, yeah.
Our, our last one wasn't.
Oh, no, that one wasn't. No, everything else is but that one. Okay.
The next one will be.
But that was a, that was the city and their attorneys along with Concord TV that, that was able to get that. Yeah.
In addition to the, uh, the 5% fee?
Yes, yeah. It's a one-time, $350,000. But we're able to.
How they're doing them as pass throughs to the subscriber.
Yeah, it wasn't at the time.
They've all been, all the companies have been moving more and more towards that over the years.
So we're very fortunate through that when we got it. But we were able, even without that, we were able to raise money through some of our innovative programming, such as our Telefest every year and now Concord on Air. And we get sponsorships and we get, and as a nonprofit, we're able to do that. And, uh, and it also creates a lot of awareness of our station when we do that too. So that does help.
We backdoor that. Okay, she's absolutely right. And we backdoor that because basically, we're not allowed to do fundraising unless we get special permission. So what we do is we have the Friends of the Londonderry Access Center. And if we need a fundraiser or, in fact, they, they also buy all our coffee and keep the coffee machine running, that kind of stuff, the little stuff. So the Friends of Londonderry Access Center would take care of anything that we'd need to do that way. It's been very minimal over the years. Um, for the most part, we've been very fortunate in getting the full five in the past that we did not need to raise money. So we were, we were all sad.
We have to raise money.
Yeah.
Going back to the equipment discussion though, at like in, in Manchester, we have a certain amount of cameras. If a firefighter wants to use a camera, they come in and they use that from that pool of cameras. We have public access producers who sign our cameras. They have a designated pool amount. Uh, these cameras are designated for education and government. We have a lot of teachers that actually come in and say, hey, you know, I need to, I would love to use it to tape some of the kids. They take it out of that pool. So we have designated areas because of the fact that, I can't speak for your two places, but I can tell you right now, public access gets a lot more wear and tear than the education and government end because they, they just treat them differently. They do. They, there's no way around it. Over 14 years, some are, you know, a little rougher than others. So we keep them separated so we can keep an eye on, you know, specific number, like, you know, public access camera six went out here. It came back from this person. What happened to it, you know?
Uh, we keep records.
And, and, uh, and so, and we always know that there's cameras here to be able to give, you know, to the, to the education and government end, because we do all three. So it's, um, you know, it's, it, I don't think it makes much of a difference when it comes down to equipment, as long as it's done well. It's all about organizational management of the situation.
And policy. And it's still policy too.
Jason, do you, do you have a, a waiting list of people who want to be producers, but they can't because you don't have enough camera?
No, you have to. You have to. If somebody walks in at the door and says, I want to be an access producer, you have to.
You find a way around it.
Yeah, you figure it out. But we haven't, we have a lot of access producers.
Well, do you have, yes, do you have producers who might have a camera for three weeks, but only do three minutes of programming on air?
They can't have it that long.
No, we, we can't let them have it.
No, they, they have a sign out, like if they sign it on a Tuesday, they gotta have it back by Friday, because other people want to sign it on a Friday to have it over the weekend and so on. And it comes, it's a first serve, first come, first served basis.
And I always just tell them, I know where you live.
If they, if they go longer than that, then, then they get a warning. If they do it again, then they lose privileges, just as Dottie says. It's pro privileges. Everything, they, Dottie's absolutely right. It's, you have to put them on. You can put them on at 2:00 AM, one time. And legally, you're just, you're, you're fine.
Getting back to the organizational structure, we have two different organizations. We have a town department and we have not, two nonprofits. Other options that you know of out there?
Yeah, you could split up the channels.
Public access as a nonprofit and, uh, well, you can talk about that.
Yeah, we, we did that. We put public access by itself and we had education and government as a thing, but the problem is you.
We can have three separate.
Uh, yeah, but the problem you run into, it's not as efficient. It really isn't.
What about options?
Yeah, double things.
Fred, uh, what's his name? Bill Jennings could not be here tonight. Now, he's not a nonprofit.
No, he's not a nonprofit. He has, but he has a board of directors.
He's like a consultant.
And he is, he's been hired as a consultant for the town. Well, not a consultant, he's contracted service. He's a contracted service. Yeah. So he's not an employee?
Colleen is an employee.
Yeah, Colleen is.
Okay, so they have kind of a quasi.
Mm-hmm. That's what I'm saying. It, it's what you want.
Yeah, but it's.
There's a way to work it out.
But the efficiency, when it comes to, if you're gonna have a nonprofit, you're gonna be paying that one person, whoever works there is gonna have to go through a payroll company while the other person's gonna be going through the town. Doesn't make sense. You, it's, especially with so few dollars, you have to, you have to keep it one way or the other. Either way, and I, and I totally agree. I, I could see total aspects of, of what Dottie's talking about. I totally do. But it's.
And I think it would have been wonderful to have hands off on staff.
Jason, I'll, I wanna, uh, break the dialogue a little bit here. Um, Dick, you, uh, would you like to join us?
He's sitting back here. I thought I felt he was right there.
The other selectmen said they, they would appreciate hearing some of your comments. You've, um, you have been in charge of our TV here for 18 years.
Since I became president.
And I assume that these folks know you and, and your, what you've been doing. What have you, any comments on what you've been hearing here this evening?
No, what I've been hearing is what I've been seeing, seeing over years, the different ways it's being run and everything.
And, and just for disclosure, you used to work here and now you work?
For Nashua.
Nashua TV.
And again, I had given Bill's name as a contractor so that you'd have the third type of possibility. Uh, and Bill couldn't make it tonight.
A contractor of what?
He's contracted services for Bill Jennings in Bedford.
Executive Director of Bedford TV.
He, he's in charge of Bedford TV, right. He, he's in charge of Bedford TV, right.
But then Bedford also has employees.
Employee.
And employees.
Colleen. And then they also, similar to these folks, pay people to do the meetings, you know, X amount of dollars per meeting, so forth.
So the town has a contract with a firm or an individual?
In, in their case, it's an individual. Now, in the case of Nashua, okay, in the case of Nashua, Nashua went out looking for, originally looking for a nonprofit to run just the public access channel. They have already in place an educational person and a government person, which are both city employees, okay? They're in the franchise agreement as far as those two channels. Seven years ago, when they did the contract, key people with the proper amount of power didn't feel that public access was to be put into the agreement, so it wasn't. The mayor of Nashua last year decided to give it a shot, try it out. So they put out a request for a proposal for looking originally for a nonprofit group to operate and manage solely the public channel and start it up, okay? My company, Andrew and I, put together a proposal and submitted it as well, and after everything went through, we were chosen. So the way it works is that we're contracted, we have a contract with the city to operate and manage the public channel. We're in the building and we use the studio that the education and government also uses. In our contract, it states that, you know, there are certain times that the education and government can use it and then times that we can use it, as well as we can work together and use it whenever it's available. We're allocated with our contract X amount of dollars, and this year, this coming year, it was eighty-five thousand dollars to run the public access channel. The contract, the first contract originally had stipulations on this amount for equipment, this amount for overhead, this amount for that, and so forth. In negotiating this year's contract, we, we had it changed with them so that it's just X amount of dollars and we're responsible to make sure that we man it and that we purchase the equipment necessary to operate it. Now, in our case, because we're the public channel only, we just need to deal with field equipment because the studio's already there, whatnot. We pay a third of the heat, electricity and the, heat and electricity, we pay our share for using the studio. This year's contract, well, it doesn't stipulate it in the contract, but this coming year, I'm there full time, I have another person sixteen hours a week that's a trainer as well as post-production work, and then I have another person who's twelve hours a week who's excellent in graphics and doing backgrounds and post-production work with audio and everything.
They work, they work for you.
For CMSG, right, they're all under the contract with CMSG. So that's how that works. And I waited till after we had won the contract that I, I asked the contract manager, you know, why did you go out, you know, just for that one channel? And again, it goes back to the whole thing of, they want to make sure that they don't have an appearance of any control on the public channel. They want, you know.
Hands off.
Hands off, you know? I mean, our contract stipulates exactly what they can do, what they need to do and what we need to do. And it's, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Yeah.
So we, there's three, three basic structures that could be considered here.
I would.
And anything else you can think of.
Exactly, they all have their own unique things, but it's just what the board feels is the best way to go for you guys.
So are you confused or?
Which, well, contracts seem to be, what, typically a one-year contract and therefore always being renewed?
Well, no, this, this first year was a one-year. The one that we now signed is automatically renewed as long as there's a number in the budget and as long as we or they have not violated the contract. So it's not something we're gonna have to sign every year.
Negotiating every year.
Yeah, yeah. At least until their franchise agreement in a couple of years, and then they're gonna roll public into there and, you know, that'll be it.
Well, that's a three-year contract.
Same thing for a nonprofit.
Ours is every year, theirs is three years. My, ours is every single year.
Mine's every twenty-four.
But, yeah, it's really, there's no really specific best answer, but.
You can take a piece of each and put together your own perfect package.
Which one, which of these three have the most effort from the, from the town?
But it started off like a sentence.
From the town point of view, you know?
It's the nonprofit's gonna be, it's, you're saying, what's more work for you guys?
There's more, more labor of the, the town administrators, finance and anything else working with the television organization.
It's, the nonprofit's gonna be less. The nonprofit will be less.
Nonprofit will be less.
Yeah, it will be less, but it'll be more to start it up.
A little more upfront.
Yeah, a little more upfront, less afterwards.
Once it's off and running.
Yeah, once it's off running, you guys really don't, it's on cruise control, they deal with it, but you guys are gonna have to sit down and, sit down with a lawyer and figure out the contracts and look at other people's contracts and figure out.
And for a government department, you don't even notice, I mean, except for your budget, when you put it together, you don't, you wouldn't notice whether there's another department there or not. And like I said, the cost of the number of employees that you have would be a minimal impact on your other departments.
And if it's as a revolving fund, it really isn't in the budget.
Yeah.
It's not in your budget if you're a revolving fund.
Yeah, exactly.
Now, can I ask, can I ask Sue if, if it stayed as government, would it be its own department or would they still be? Because you can have it as its own department, which is what Londonderry did.
Right.
So that you're not taxing the administrator with all the petty stuff and everything. Or it can be just employees under the responsibility of the town administrator or, or assistant or whoever.
Another option to consider.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda getting to.
Right now, it falls under administration.
Right.
It could be a separate department.
Because in the case of Dottie in Londonderry as a separate department, she was also responsible for all the calls coming in from customers about Comcast.
Which is not necessarily the norm, I haven't found anybody else in the country that does that. But as the, as the director of the facility, I took care of everything to do with the facility and the three channels. And then on top of that, I was also the person who negotiated two of the franchise agreements and, and then made sure that the community had what I refer to as their entitlements that they came through on a regular basis. But if the customers had not reached satisfaction with the cable company to resolve an issue, now I have your phone numbers on the back of the bill, instead of calling Sue, they would have called me.
No, they get Catherine.
And I would, oh, yeah, okay.
I can remember.
Okay, so instead of her, they would have, they would have taken, always, yep. Boy, I understand why you are so frustrated, gotta start there, but I also handled all of those. Yeah. And Erin is doing that in my absence. So that's a totally different structure, just like that.
Jason, wrap it up here.
I, I think, I think the, I think every aspect that you were given to is legitimate, has its own standing. I think you, I, I, every, we, well, and please don't take this as an alienation, but Dick, no, please don't, but Dick, myself and you guys live in Goffstown. So you, you have to, you guys know Goffstown, you know, we know Goffstown, and so you guys have to kinda sit down and say, okay, what do you think the best position is for the townspeople of Goffstown and what you think they're gonna like the best? And you guys know them better than, than I do, that's for sure, you guys have your, you know, community a lot more, but.
One thing you had pointed out, Jason, was, you know, if it's a nonprofit, they're not an employee of the town, so you don't have, they're not in retirement system and you have savings there. But could that also be a disadvantage, especially if you're seeking out a full-time coordinator and if they're already in the retirement system and they wanna, they're, they're seeking a full-time position that's also in their retirement?
That's a catch-22, because I, I totally agree with you, because they could turn around and do that, but also, as in the sense of Bill Jennings, he, he just came in as a straight salary, here you go. Some people don't, you know, they already have a health plan through their wives and stuff like that. If you're a nonprofit, you can just turn around and say, you know what, yeah, I can't give you because I have to offer this amount and this is the only, the stuff that I can give you, I'm gonna give you ten thousand dollars more because I'm not gonna give you health insurance. So there you go, you can actually attract them better, just giving them a different side. But yes, if somebody is retirement, that would better, or you could turn around and offer them more money and less benefits.
It's like a double-edged sword.
It is, there's so many different ways to do it.
Or flexibility.
There's no formula, you know, right formula.
Hiring.
Yeah, there is more flexibility and there, I, I've found it, just, just having been both ways, being hired, helped in the process of being hired under the sound of the city and as a nonprofit, yes, I have more flexibility because I can turn and dictate the terms. I don't have the terms dictated to me.
I think also you'll find that when you're hiring from, from the younger crowd, they're stepping in the door because they're fascinated with the industry, because they absolutely love the whole concept of the free speech thing, and they come in and they're willing to make a few sacrifices here and there. As they get older, okay, they need more of those stabilities, they need to have the health insurance, they need to have the retirement funds and things like that. And by that time, they're working their way up and they're gonna be your next director. So you have to think about that maybe two, seven.
But that's the.
Lot to think about.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna make a decision tonight.
I just think you should take whatever pieces you like and put that puzzle together and see if it shaped like Goffstown.
And if, I don't know, if I were sitting in your places, I'd probably wanna check and probably are intending to check with like our manager, Thomas Bell, Jim Boulay, to get their perspective on whether they feel that, you know, how it's working for them.
Yeah, that's true, you can call, you know, Mayor of Manche, Mayor of Manchester and give him a call, I'm sure he'd be more than happy to tell you all about.
You gotta call him on another issue.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure you are, but no, it's true.
It would also be nice if you had the names of a few residents.
Yeah.
And ask them how they felt about the different structures, because you're gonna get totally different perspectives.
Yep, yep.
I, I get the feeling, I'd like to be a, a fly on the wall to hear the director of one station talk to the directors of other stations, because you, you tell the horror stories among.
No, we agree on nothing, we agree on free speech.
I, I can tell that you've all worked together quite a lot in the past.
We do share a lot of information and when Concord Community TV started.
What, what works, what doesn't, what to stay away from.
We got the policies and procedures from Londonderry and Manchester and Bed, and right, and so we took.
When we started in nineteen ninety-three, we depended upon Dottie for.
That's right.
The worst, the worst thing you can do is alienate yourself and whoever the director, the coordinator is of, of the city, needs to embrace the rest of the communities, because I can tell you, no matter, I've been doing, like I said, for fourteen years, there's stuff that Dottie knows that I don't know, there's stuff that Doris knows, there's still the Dick that I don't know.
And I love having both of them in my, in my network.
And we have, Manchester has problems that Goffstown won't have.
And Dick.
And, 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 you know, even Londonderry won't have, and just, just the nature of where we are, so.
How many nonprofits are there for PEG stations in the state of New Hampshire?
In New Hampshire?
Yeah.
Actually, not, it's, not as many.
There's, there's Keen.
Keen.
Keen is nonprofit.
Yeah, so Keen, Concord, Manchester.
There's not too many in New Hampshire, in Massachusetts.
It's starting to be.
Massachusetts is all nonprofits.
It's all nonprofits.
It's a couple of government.
Because in Massachusetts, it's a state law that all five percent has to go to it, so, and they also, Massachusetts was actually the, the starting point of, of access in general. They, they, they're, they're crazy.
No, New York.
No, was it New York? I thought, I always said it was Massach, Massachusetts, but.
Yeah, our grandfather of access just passed away recently.
That's right, sorry.
He was the father of access, but then he got older.
Yeah.
And he started in New York, started in Canada and then he went to New York with real public access and he set the, he set the bar for all of us.
I, I really appreciate, we got a lot of talent here this evening and experience, whether it's.
And opinions.
And, well, true.
No shortage of opinions.
There is something new that's happening now that didn't happen when I was.
Opinions come with the nature of your operation.
Oh, right, free speech.
But, you know, whether it's Nashua or Londonderry, Manchester, Concord, bringing a lot of information here to our community, I appreciate your, giving us your time this evening.
And I would have to agree with.
Jason has invested interest in being here.
Yeah, and I think that Jason was on the right track. I think what he was gonna tell you, if I can finish his thought, was that it should be mandatory that whoever runs your access, five oh one C three oh government, become a member of the NHCCM, so we know what the heck they're doing.
A mandate, right?
And, and I could say this, that you, as a, as a, as a town, some of the forms, if you can get, if you can get forms from somebody else, you will save money. If you, our nonprofit contract, if you guys decide, you decide you wanna do nonprofit, we have a contract that we already wrote, you know, we had a lawyer already do with the, the city, we can give it to you to take a look at, you guys can pick whatever you want.
And we already have a statement of compliance, and we already have policies and.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're more than, you know, happy to help each other out anytime we can, so.
So as an organization, we're here as well.
And what's NHCCM stand for?
New Hampshire Coalition of Community Media.
Coalition.
Yeah, we wanted to include radio in case they ever wanted to jump in there.
We tried, it's very tough to get a radio frequency, it's very tough.
Well, there's, we got one in New Hampshire, two.
No, yeah, front and back, I wanna start.
Jason, thank you for, you know, your role in our cable committee here and, but, you know, bringing our other guests here this evening. I'm sure, I'm sure Andrew, our technician in the background, is probably gonna talk to you tomorrow about banging on the table.
Oh, yeah, I know.
But, but thank.
Whatever.
Yeah, they, they recognize what I'm talking about, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us, and I'm not leaving without my team.
Good luck.
I wouldn't let you.
And we're gonna have a, Catherine's gonna have the, a tusk, tough task here, because she has to write the minutes and.
Oh, no.
They're gonna, they're gonna have to be very meaningful to the other two board members that aren't here.
I strive for that, please strive for that.
Thank you.
Well, you made a decision before, before you leave tonight, she could sort of skew them to look like it was a good decision.
We would never do that.
No, I'm so glad. Free speech, free, exactly as it was said.
Good night, thanks, Dottie.
Lot of information there, huh? Yeah. I like the idea, I mean, if, if they're gonna offer up the contracts, let's, let's start.
We're gonna have to reinvent the wheel.
There's ongoing examples of all three modes of, of operating a studio.
Yes.
It's just that, one to decide which one we wanna go forward with, you know, business as usual and don't do anything, or do we wanna venture into a new role between who operates operates our stations, our channels?
Kind of intrigued by the hybrid portion, you know, the public portion is.
So it's a government employee in a town department, running either the school channel, government channel.
Right.
But then, different ways, contracting out for the public or nonprofit control of the public.
That's intriguing to me.
It's interesting to note that the three communities that set up nonprofits have sizably more money than the town of Goffstown in its, their franchise agreement.
You're talking, was Keen, Concord?
Keen, Concord and Manchester.
Manchester, yes.
So they can assume the costs related to a nonprofit. But if ours is only eleven, a hundred and eleven thousand or a hundred and twelve thousand going towards it estimated, how does that all shake out? Yeah.
Not as much to work with as capital.
That's our last item, right?
That was our last item. And we, we talked right through the second public comment and there were no members of the public here for comment. And we have, I don't believe we have any further items to discuss this evening. Thank you for your attendance.
Motion to adjourn.
I hear a motion to adjourn. Seconded. And the vote is aye.
Aye.